Committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made? If you'd call roll, please.
Spiegelberg?
Here.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman McConnell.
Here.
Youngworth is absent. Alderman Rosak.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Great, ready, let's move on. Welcome, everyone. We're going to start off with committee business. The overview of TID 7, the amendment of the two project plans. Mr. Duffy.
I'll just give you a general overview. You guys have seen many of these numbers in some of our conversations. Obviously, you know, from a staff perspective, we're always trying to move forward our comp plan, in this case, the southwest Summit Avenue area plan, as well as the strategic plan of the city, which talks about investment within the Summit Avenue Olympia area, which is part of. As many of you know, as you've been brought in as council members, TIF is really our only tool to help facilitate development from that perspective. And again, we have two opportunities here to be able to both invest in the Olympia Fields area, as well as invest in the adaptive reuse of the ski hill and sports complex. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Johnson, who will go through the elements of the project plan and the cash flow and all those elements, and share with you then, after that, the timeline of the process as we move forward.
Thank you. Good evening. The presentation I'm going to go through is a summary of the project plan document which you've been provided. There's not any new information.
Can you announce yourself just for the record, please?
Greg Johnson from Ellers.
Great, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Mark's giving me a hard time, so.
That's fine. So the PowerPoint presentation is really a summary of the project plan document which you've received. There's no new information. It's just a way to kind of walk through the elements of that lengthy document. Just before we get into the particulars of this proposed amendment to TID District number seven, just a quick recap of how a taxable finance district works. So when a TIF district is created, all the parcels within the boundary of the district had a taxable value as of the time the district was created. The cumulative total of all the property values within the TID at district creation is called the base value. City and all the taxing jurisdictions continue to collect their share of tax revenue on that value that was there at the time the TID district was created. The financial benefit of a TIF district occurs when that value increases above the base due to redevelopment, new development, depreciation of property. That increase in value over the base is called the incremental value. The city retains all of the tax revenue generated on that new value, the city's share, as well as the share of the other taxing jurisdictions. What TIF is at its essence is a partnership between the city and the other taxing jurisdictions to capture the tax revenue from the new development within a district to help pay for the expenses associated with bringing that development to fruition. And when the TID district either reaches the end of its maximum life or generates sufficient revenue to pay off its obligations, the district closes. All of that incremental value returns to the tax rolls, benefiting all the taxing jurisdictions who then collect their share of that going forward. So let's get into the specifics of the proposed amendment for TID District number seven. The purpose of this amendment is twofold. First, it's a boundary amendment. It's the second of four boundary amendments permitted for any TID district. It adds two additional parcels to the district totaling 16.23 acres, which will help facilitate some additional townhouse development within the district. And then the second purpose of the amendment is just what's called a project plan amendment. That's to update the eligible TID project costs, adding additional $24,136,000 of eligible costs. So those are the two purposes of the amendment. When TID District number seven was created, it was established as a blighted TID district. The common council under previous action back in 2020 had identified the Olympia Fields redevelopment area as meeting the statutory definition of blighted. Anytime territory is added to a district, you still need to certify that all the legal requirements are still met for that type of district. So in other words, we have to demonstrate that it still meets the statutory criteria of a blighted district. So when the district was created, it had about 65 acres of property within the TID district boundary. All of that was declared blighted. Some additional 88 acres was added through the First Amendment. About 46 acres was designated as blighted. And then we're adding the 16.23 acres through this amendment. So we're still at 65% of the total area of the district, meeting the statutory definition of blighted. So we're within the legal criteria to keep this as a blighted TID. So they map up on the screen, the two parcels that are kind of hatched are the two parcels that are being added to the TID district. So that's what comprises the total acreage being added to the district. Again, that's really to facilitate some additional townhouse development to help generate tax increment, to help pay for existing obligations within the district. So within the project plan, we identified the estimated increases in value, or the additional incremental value that's anticipated from the two developers that are currently active within this TID district. So first is Newman Developments. They're projecting an additional $50.6 million of incremental value to be added within the district. We have a breakdown here of kind of how that's generally arrived at. So they anticipate $4 million of additional retail and commercial value, $10 million for the repurpose chalet, also known as the social development, $2 million of anticipated office development. And then the two parcels being added through this proposed amendment are estimated to add additional $34.6 million of value from that townhouse development. Vanguard is the other development. Their Elevate development, which is another key component of this amendment, is anticipated to add an additional $36 million of incremental value constructed between 2026 and 2027. Kind of within the existing territory that they're developing within the district, there is opportunity for additional development. But other than just kind of what's known here in the pipeline, we haven't factored in any of that in this cash flow model. That I'll summarize in a few moments. So just to recap, kind of what had been identified as eligible TID expenditures previously. When the district was created, there was about $17.5 million of project costs identified, which, you know, primarily consisted of infrastructure, some land acquisition and development incentives. And then when the First Amendment was approved, it added additional $8.3 million of project costs, which added, again, more expenditure authority for infrastructure, as well as some property acquisition incentives, and then an allowance for the future Economblock Parkway anticipated through intergovernmental collaboration. So the majority of these expenditures have been incurred with, you know, kind of the exception, at least to date, of the Parkway intergovernmental collaboration amount. So really, by looking at facilitating the additional development within the district, that's where the added project costs come into focus. So to that end, this proposed amendment adds additional expenditure authority for Snyder Way extension, both street and utility improvements, some related traffic and signalization improvements within the district. And then there's also some allowances for development incentives related to the social and to Elevate. Portions of these project costs are anticipated to be funded through the issuance of debt. So there's estimated interest expense, financing costs, and then just ongoing planning and administrative costs over the remaining life of the district. It's important to note, when a project plan is amended and you're adding additional expenditure authority, as outlined here in this chart, the amendment of the project plan itself does not commit the city to complete these projects. It still requires the normal approval that you would have for any infrastructure projects, and then any developer incentive that is awarded is required to have a development agreement between the city and the developer. So really, the project plan amendment makes these TID eligible expenditures that the city can then choose to implement following, you know, approval of a project plan amendment, if that occurs. But, you know, again, just the amendment of the district isn't a unilateral commitment to undertake these costs. Included in the project plan were just some maps that just provide a general reference in terms of where the proposed improvements are located. I mentioned the Snyder Way extension, so there's road improvement aspects to that, and then utility aspects to it as well. So on the right-hand side here, we show the sanitary sewer improvements. Then there's some proposed water main improvements, and then some ongoing storm sewer and stormwater improvements anticipated as well. And then ongoing improvements related to sidewalk path and just general multi-use pedestrian bike, other improvements kind of throughout the district. So these maps just kind of depict the general location of where those improvements are As I mentioned, some of the main development anticipated in the district going forward, and some of the costs being added to this district through this amendment are related to development incentives. So the first project which you're familiar with is the Elevate project by Vanguard. So this is just kind of the rendering of that particular project. And then the social is the next aspect of it, kind of proposed by Newman Development in partnership with some others. That's the repurpose chalet, the kind of development of a kind of a multi-use entertainment, recreation, mixed-use facility to kind of repurpose that area within the district. So in terms of the financial analysis that's included within the project plan, the development assumptions, which I'll summarize next, are really, that refers to the increase in incremental value, or the taxable value from ongoing development within the district. I summarized that on a few slides prior. It also includes the estimated incremental value from the two parcels proposed to be added through this amendment. As I mentioned, all projects are TID eligible, but in terms of what gets implemented ultimately should be derived by how much tax increment is available to support the project cost prior to undertaking the expenditures. The cash flow analysis that's within the project plan, I'll summarize in a moment, that includes all existing obligations of the district, and then illustrations of how the project costs that are added through this amendment will be funded as well. So I'll speak to that in a moment. One item I just want to kind of mention, you know, when this district was created, the tax rate for the TID district was $16.47 per thousand. That has dropped since the district was created down to $12.07 per thousand. So that is impacting kind of the financial performance of the district. That's not unusual, what we've seen with TIF districts throughout the state, particularly the past couple of years. Many communities have seen kind of a steady decline in that tax rate. That's simply due to the fact that valuations have been going up at a greater percentage than what levy increases have been going up, which is what's driving down that tax rate. Also, with the cash flow model, which I'll summarize, the district is presently projected to close in 2044. When the district was created, the projection closure was in 2041, but that that did not include the redevelopment of the chalet. So in terms of the development assumptions, this is just a detailed breakdown of what I summarized earlier in terms of the anticipated development from the Elevate, the social, other development anticipated from Newman throughout their remaining build-out over the next few years. And then in the northern and southern townhomes, that's really the estimated incremental value that's coming from the two parcels that are proposed to be added within this district. So when we model the cash flow projections, this is kind of what we're using to kind of project the future tax increment within the district. So this district does have a maximum life of 27 years. So based on the incremental value that's already been generated within the district, plus continued build-out of development that's already in progress, the anticipated development that we summarized in the presentation, over the 27-year life of the district, it's estimated this would generate over $62 million of tax increment revenue. In terms of the cash flow projection, a lot of numbers. I'm just going to summarize this at a high level in terms of kind of how the district presently is structured, and really how the amendment kind of continues some of the key financial relationships you already have in place. So the main revenue stream to this TID district is the tax increment, the increase in taxes on the new value that's constructed within the district. The city has borrowed money over the past couple of years to finance infrastructure that was approved in the original project plan and Amendment Number One project plan. So you'll see several debt issues kind of listed here across the top, along with, you know, some of the developers represented. So there's debt service that was issued for improvements related to the area developed by Vanguard, similar to areas developed by Newman Developments, as well as some general TIF projects that were financed by the city. Under the current development agreements that are in place with Vanguard and Newman, if the tax increment that their developments alone generate is not sufficient to cover their respective share of the debt service, they are required to make shortfall payments to the city. It's anticipated that, you know, that relationship will continue for any debt that would be issued for subsequent projects, you know, proposed through this project plan amendment. But just again, want to emphasize that that relationship and that requirement is already in place. So through this proposed amendment, the projects related to kind of Newman's development are anticipated to be financed with debt, a tax-exempt component related to public improvements, a taxable component related to development incentives, since it's not related to a public improvement. So that debt service is estimated here in the columns in the cash flow. Again, that's debt service that will ultimately be guaranteed by Newman Developments, similar to their existing debt service that's in place. Other project costs that are anticipated, there's an existing, what's called MRO, municipal revenue obligation, or pay-as-you-go development incentive that's in place for Vanguard that is paid out from increment generated from their projects. If, you know, for some reason their projects would not generate the full amount of tax increment to pay the full principal amount of that MRO, the city is under no obligation to make up that shortfall. And then the incentive for Elevate, estimated at $6.5 million, has a similar relationship. It's also on a pay-as-you-go basis, generated, you know, from their development to reimburse that particular cost. And then we just have ongoing kind of planning and other professional services costs over the life of the district. So with the development that's already occurred, development that's in progress, and then development that's anticipated from this proposed amendment, and then all of the costs factored into that into this cash flow, as we show down here by 2044, the cumulative balance in the TID district projected to be greater than the liabilities outstanding. That means that the district would be in position to close early and pay off its obligations. So again, that's a few years longer than when the district was originally created. Tax rate has dropped, somewhat impacting that. But also, this is, you know, also including the redevelopment of the chalet, which was not, you know, part of the original kind of development expectations within the TID. So in terms of kind of where we're at, and kind of the overall timeline for this process, this is all dictated by state statute. So the process started this afternoon, was a convening of the Joint Review Board, which consists of all the taxing jurisdictions, including the city and a public member. They just held an organizational meeting, heard this exact same presentation, but no action was taken or is required at that meeting. The next statutory required step in the process is tomorrow evening, which is a Plan Commission public hearing. They have a resolution on their agenda, which they are, in order for the amendment to proceed, are required to approve. Plan Commission approval is required. If the Plan Commission would not approve it, this will not advance to the common council. If it's advanced to the common council, you all are scheduled to kind of consider this again on August 5th through formal consideration of a resolution. If it progresses past that point, the Joint Review Board has tentatively scheduled the meeting on August 6th to have final consideration, and their approval is required as well. So in essence, three bodies have to approve any TID creation or amendment as required by statute. Approval is required at each level. If it's not achieved, the process just legally stops. So to kind of summarize the project plan amendment, adding two parcels, that's the boundary component to facilitate some additional townhouse development, adding some additional expenditures to kind of really achieve kind of the ongoing master build-out and development within the district, with the two existing developers that are already building within the district. I think it's been mentioned in the past by city staff, it's really kind of an opportunity to kind of see that area kind of fully redeveloped, particularly the chalet. And so this amendment is really kind of putting in place the financial tool to provide revenue to help support that investment. So that's an overview of the amendment, the financials and the timeline. I'll pause here, see if staff has anything additional they'd like to add. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Alderman, council, do you have any questions for Greg, for Bob Duffy? I also see Matt Maroni is here representing Vanguard. Do we have a representative from Newman here? I don't see one. Okay. He'll be here, okay. Alderman Mulder.
So this was supposed to, or it was originally to close in 2041, and this extends it by three years. We're currently...
Two years.
Two years. Anyway, so we're currently ahead. So when would this close if we didn't do this additional? Do we know when the TID would close if we didn't do this additional?
It's still going to be open a little longer than 2041. It's still going to kind of remain within that 2041 to 2044 range.
Okay, so we're a little behind where we weren't...
We are, but I mean, that's, it's not really due to, you know, any lack of performance. It's really just due to, you know, incremental value has been coming online, development's continuing, that tax rate drop is kind of implicating things as well. So, you know, it's still projected to close early.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Well, considering Newman's not here, this may be a Duffy question, but those two on the map, where the townhouses are going, what was originally planned for those spots?
In the plan development, those were always identified as those twin homes.
Okay, that's what I thought. So why is it being presented as like a change, then?
Oh, it's not a change. It's an addition to the district to generate increment, to be able to establish the increment necessary to pay back the debt related to this project.
We're adding land.
These are, the other, the way to look at it, and again...
You're not adding any building.
The TIF law continues to change, right? When we first started, some of these, attainable housing wasn't even a conversation, to be in all honesty right now. These twin homes that are being, these are purchased twin homes, in the value of $300,000 to $400,000, are attainable in our community. Because everything that's single-family in our community is north of a half a million. So it's another objective that we, as a city, can do, but also take advantage of that increment to feel the benefit moving forward those other initiatives in our plans and our strategic plan.
I have a question about the attainable homes. Are we ensuring that they're going to be really obtainable? Because the ones over in Arrowood are listed at a half million.
Well, we don't drive, project costs, materials costs, all of those things. Again, the city has done everything that we can do as it relates to lot sizes. We've narrowed street widths, from what I understand. We try to bring different types of things in there. Once they hit the market, that's a difficult thing to do. But again, we do know that these are the homes that are in that range to be able to do that.
Also for council...
But we can't control that market. We really can't as a governmental entity.
Also, to recognize, council, this was, as you well know, this was set up to be as conservative estimate as possible, because there's also quite a bit of developable land around the social in that area. That is not included in this analysis. So the hope is, if that area gets activated, then that will actually help us to close that TIF a lot faster.
Do you mean around the social or the Elevate? You mean the Elevate or the social?
Both.
Oh, both.
Both, absolutely both. But there's a lot of open area there that was not calculated. So when they did the process, we worked with Ellers, we worked with both the developers and our staff. What we looked is what was in the queue and attainable, so that we didn't overestimate the value of this cash flow, because we don't want to end up having the taxpayers have to pay for any of it. Alderman Mulder.
With or without this financing, those twin homes will be built. This is not facilitating the building of those.
Correct.
We're including it in here so that we get the increment. So I just want to...
That's correct.
Yep. Rusty, I wanted to make sure you understood that, that this is not facilitating the building of those twin homes. Those would be built whether or not we approve this. Okay.
No, I'm just making the point that we keep saying attainable, and it's not exactly attainable.
You have a good point, because I remember with Arrowood, those were supposed to be more affordable.
Alderman Ellis.
So if I hear you're right, the tax rate is going to go from 12 to 16?
No.
Or is it the opposite?
It went from 16 down to 12, which reduced the amount of increment that we get on an annual basis. That's why you're saying that this TIF district is still closing out in that 2041 to 2044 period.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for anyone on this discussion item of council? Alderman Rosak.
Was there any objections from the Joint Review Board, Greg?
They didn't take any official action, but there were no objections raised, just some general dialogue and discussion about the type of development being proposed, just because they weren't as familiar with kind of what was specifically proposed. No objections were raised, but again, no vote was taken either.
Right, right, but there weren't significant...
No open negativity either, I was there.
Okay, no significant concerns expressed.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Yeah. Alderman McConnell.
The $7 million in debt financing, is that specific to this amendment, or does that include rollover debt financing from the original Amendment One? Like 715 or something like that? It was up in the previous one.
Oh. Right, of course. It's taxable debt because it's an obligation tied to that MRO.
Yeah, but I think your question is whether it was inclusive.
If we didn't move forward with this amendment, that 7 million goes away, or is that any rollover from previous debt servicing too?
No, that's the estimated interest expense to finance some of the public infrastructure, and then also the development incentive for the social, which is financed on a taxable interest rate, which is higher. So that's the combined interest rate for financing both infrastructure and the Elevate incentive.
Just for the Amendment Two expenses, though?
Correct.
It's a lot of money.
That's for interest.
Interest alone.
Yeah. Wow.
Any other questions? Matt Maroni, do you have any comments from Vanguard, anything you'd like to share?
Ask the lawyer if he wants to talk.
He didn't hesitate.
Same thing. You're not going to get this.
So we're very appreciative of our relationship with the city.
And you are?
Oh, I'm Matt Maroni with Vanguard, sorry. So we're very appreciative with our relationship with the city, but most importantly, we're really excited about the social. That building, to have it be repurposed and used in the way that they're proposing, we believe, is going to be very beneficial to the city and that whole area. So, you know, I think we're bullish still on the area. Unfortunately, you know, times change, construction costs change, you know, makes it difficult to make these projects work, and we want to, you know, have a first-class development. I think we're well on our way, and the Elevate building, I think, will be a really good centerpiece for it as well, working with the social.
Thank you.
So thank you for everything.
All right, thank you all, and Greg, thank you for coming and doing this twice today. We appreciate it. Appreciate the great work. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come close it, Bob. Is it moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?
Oh, aye.
Okay. We will start the common council meeting promptly at 7:30 in about 10 minutes. Okay. We will start the common council meeting promptly at 7:30 in about 10 minutes. Order the City of Oconomok Common Council meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
Representative Dietrich, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Would you call roll, please?
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman McConnell.
Here.
Alderman Youngworth is absent. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Outman-Clothe.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Without objection, I'd like to ask council if I can move item 8A with the special presentation of a citation of the city's 150th anniversary by Representative Barbara Dietrich. May I bring that forward? Seeing no objections, Representative Dietrich, if you'd please come up to the podium.
I will. Well, thank you, everyone. What an exciting year to celebrate our great city. I couldn't let the occasion pass without the state legislature recognizing our great city of Oconomok and this momentous occasion. So along with the Speaker of the Assembly and the Speaker Pro Tem, I introduce the citation in honor of Oconomok's 150th anniversary. I'll read it to you. And as you all know, if you've been to my citation presentations before for like Boy Scouts or something, we like to use the word "whereas" a lot. So, know you by these presents. Whereas the city of Oconomok is celebrating its 150th anniversary, where the first settlers stayed on the Oconomok River by Lock Labele, where a dam was built. The Potawatomi called this area Koonumowok, meaning where the waters fall. And whereas, Oconomok was settled as a town in 1846, then a village in 1865, and finally, a city in 1875. During this time, the community saw the construction of the Milwaukee-Water Town Plank Road and the Milwaukee and Water Town Railroad, which led to significant growth of the community. And whereas, Oconomok has seen steady growth in the last 150 years with a population of more than 18,000. And whereas, numerous businesses have called the Oconomok area home over the years, including Brownberry Ovens, the Oconomok Canning Company, which my dad threatened to make me work at if I didn't get good grades in high school. I'll just have you on loan. The Carnation Company, while agriculture helps sustain the area with staples such as Pabst Farms. And whereas, notable residents of Oconomok include comedian Charlie Barons, outboard motor inventor Ole Evanrude, businessman Robert McCullough, scientist Increase Lapham, among others. And whereas, Oconomok has had numerous notable events occur in the community, such as the 1932 U.S. Olympic speed skating trials on Fowler Lake and hosting the premiere of the film of The Wizard of Oz in 1939. And whereas, lake country, including Oconomok, has been a popular vacation spot for many people over the years, including six presidents who enjoyed the area and various hotels in Oconomok. Now therefore, Representative Barbara Dietrich, on behalf of the Wisconsin State Assembly, under Assembly Rule 97, does hereby congratulate the city of Oconomok on its 150th year anniversary and wish it another 150 years of more success and prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So.
Can we have a Kodak moment?
Yeah, Barbara has requested a Kodak moment, so Bob Duffy is going to organize this. Where do you want us?
Hell.
Turn them all outside, Bob.
Open the bell, Tom.
Where's that? And do it right there?
Right here.
Right in front of the 150?
Yeah, with the 150. Sounds great.
That's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
But I am going to have to shut that computer down.
Why don't you come over here, Barbara?
You shouldn't have asked me because.
No, it's good.
Moving as fast as I can.
Okay, two rows here, children, two rows. Do I need to teach you everything vertically? Challenge people like me in the front.
We don't need two rows. One row, so you can see everything. You come in the front as our.
And go from a pot. All right.
Thank you very much.
You've got congratulations.
Shouldn't have asked me.
Thank you, Bob.
There's a picture somewhere in there.
Three.
Hey, let's move on. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for June 17th, 2025.
So moved, Outman-Clothe?
Second, Ellis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passed. We have no consent agenda items at this time, but prior to that, we also have no comments from any blue cards from anyone in the audience. Is there anyone that has any comments or suggestions here from the citizens?
That was taken back.
Oh. Yep. Seeing no comments or suggestions from citizens, no consent agenda items. We'll jump right into our committee reports. We'll start with finance. Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3290 authorizing funding for our tourism initiatives and the 2026 budget allocations. Mr. Duffy.
Sure. During our recent budget priorities conversations, one of the discussions or comments that was made is two. One, let's try to spend down some of the tourism reserves as well as looking at the potential to place some funds towards the Historical Society as they are starting to embark on a capital campaign. Currently, that building is over 100 years old, has a considerable amount of needs as it relates to the restrooms, the amphitheater space, the lighting, the HVAC. They envision the needs for that facility to reach about $1 million to be able to truly make it the showcase building that it needs to be for this community. So one of the things we're bringing forward is a resolution, symbolically a resolution in recognition of providing $150,000 in honor of our 150th, to be able to showcase that into the recognizing our past as well as to the future in order to signify their fundraising campaign. So we support that. The other initiative, as we said, I said in the memo, this building was actually a National Guard Armory that was provided the city. The city actually provided to the Historical Society for a home. And again, so we want to do everything we can to continue to support them and what they do. And with me tonight, Justin Agar Pratt, who's our Executive Director. Sandy Carter is one of our board members. So if you have any of the hard questions, Justin can answer some.
Great, and thank you. We discussed this in committee prior to this evening. And like to open it up for any comments or questions. Alderman Spiegelberg.
I think this is a perfect use of tourism dollars. We've been trying to find these wonderful opportunities to do this. I was privileged to sit with Justin and the mayor at the Historical Society to talk about this. And we had initially thrown out a number of $100,000. And then we left the meeting and I got thinking about this and I said, we need to try to do 150 in honor of the 150th. So here we are. So we're sort of the kickoff to this whole capital campaign. And with our 150, we'd like to encourage a matching of sorts with your donors that will come. And I want to thank Sandy for being here. And of course, Justin, thank you so much. And we look forward to having this be a benefit to our community overall.
So this is being proposed for the audience as a matching, in a sense, matching gift, matching grant, up to $150,000 for the renovations. Justin, do you mind coming to the podium? If you'd please introduce yourself and share a little bit about what the plans are from the Historical Society, from the building, the outside, the inside. I think it'd be nice for everybody to get a better picture of how this money's being used.
Yes, yeah. Thank you. Again, my name is Justin Agar Pratt. I'm the Director at the Historical Society. I've been there in that role since last spring. And some of the needs of the building include a resurface, a patching job of some holes in our exterior, as well as repaint of the exterior of that building. It's my understanding that the Ephesus was updated and replaced when the museum moved in there and opened in 1991 and has not had that full resurface and patch job since. So we've got some birds and some moisture trying to make their homes in the exterior of the building. If you've seen historic photos of that building, you will see that there were windows all around because it was a National Guard Armory. Most of the windows were covered to protect artifacts in the original museum. Now, the artifacts have moved back into what was the drill hall of the armory. And those windows, we plan to keep covered, but the front of the building, to match the historical authenticity, as well as to offer light, as well as security, so we can see what's going on outside the building and vice versa. We would love to turn those windows on the first floor in the front of the building back into windows. Our restrooms have not been updated since 1991, and so we want to bring those up to ADA compliance. And then throughout the building, in our exhibit halls, we need updated lighting so that people can really see and experience and read about what they're seeing. We've held a number of focus groups, and every focus group, a majority of the participants came back saying, I have a hard time, the lighting in here is not good. I have a hard time reading what's there. Some of these changes, including the bathrooms, will necessitate an upgrade of the entry hallway, as well as our new research center, just because of where walls are and such. And then, of course, there's And then, of course, there's the magnificent theater space, which whoever had the foresight to put a 50-seat theater in a museum our size in the late 80s, early 90s, was brilliant. And we use that for not only monthly, sometimes multiple times a month, presentations of Oconomok history. We also host hundreds of elementary school students that use that space every year. We try to, as much as space as we have, try to host other outside groups to have meetings, programs, presentations. Upgrading that theater is really going to help us enhance that, and also provide a way for us to generate some incomes, some income, excuse me, to continue to be self-sustaining. We can rent that space out for private events, corporate events, et cetera. So that's kind of the big picture of what we're trying to do. Keep the building historic, but also kind of pave the way so that we can continue to preserve the city's past into the future.
Great. Council members, do you have any questions? Alderman Rosack.
Yeah, in the committee meeting, I'm actually for donating the 150, but in the committee meeting, we discussed, is this just a straight-up donation? Alderman Spiegelberg said this was a matching. There's nothing in the resolution about this being a matching. There's also nothing in the resolution about if they have to hit the 150 before we put in the 150. But in the committee meeting, we discussed about putting something in addition to this resolution, saying, I don't know, something in the effect of the funds will be distributed when, you know, 150 is reached in fundraising or some additional amount.
We would have to...
So I'm open to whatever that suggestion would be, but I think we can add a be it for, a be it further resolved clause at the very end that outlines that better. So what were you envisioning, Karen?
No, I was envisioning that we would have to revise that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so when we make that motion, if you want to revise that, that would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, for whoever's been involved, Bob, or whoever's been working on it, how would you guys like to see that? Would you want it to be they raise the 150, then we distribute the 150? Or do they need, you know, to itemize those phases before we distribute the 150?
Sorry, don't make...
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay, that we would hold on to that 150, and that then they would provide us with invoices up to that amount, and then the money would be released.
What I'm hearing is two different things. We would have to prove that we've raised 150 in order to get the 150 is what I thought I heard in the committee, as opposed to what I thought I just heard you say is, we have to invoice you up to 150.
No, I think the point is...
I don't want us, the Historical Society, to get into an issue of us being part of a public construction project.
Right.
No, that's...
When I heard that, I was like, I don't, we don't want to do that.
Let's kind of circle this back.
I did not know of this, so when I drafted the resolution, that's why it wouldn't have been in there. So however you make the motion, make sure you define it. If it's, you know, we'll disperse upon, you know, evidence provided by the Historical Society that it's been matched, that the city will disperse, we can add that to the resolution prior to its signature.
That sounds more clear. Wonderful.
So that's important in how the motion is made. Any other questions or comments from other Alderman? Alderman Mulder.
For Bob, what are our current reserves, and what do we annually, what do we expect to add this year?
I'm going to look over at Hannah. She knows that about her. 400 and something.
So as part of the budget process, we have been looking at where are we going to be for '25, kind of where we're going to be for '26. I don't have it up right now. I could if you give me a couple of minutes to pull it up, kind of where we're going to be at for the end of the year. But based on what we've got coming in for '25, all the way through the end of '26, we can fit this in. It's kind of like worked into the budget that we have currently proposed right now.
So is this, yeah, what, like what percentage of this, is this 20% of what we expect to have, most of it?
So I would say...
I don't need exact numbers, just...
The tourism revenues that we have slated for next year are like 525,000, and their budget's, I think, a little over 800,000, once we have all the final pieces together. And that includes the 150,000 that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
One clarification on when we make that revision. Can we, can we make it that the matching amount will not come from granting sources? Because they do have some wonderful granting resources that are pretty much a sure thing. I think if we did this based on not having the grant money be a part of that, it would be a greater impetus for private donors to match towards that 150.
Depends upon how much you want to regulate it. That's up to you guys.
Well, let's ask Justin what his thoughts are on that.
You know, so you're saying you don't want to chill the fundraising efforts by they get a grant for 150, we get the 150, and then nobody, it's like, okay, I guess we're done raising funds, kind of thing, right?
I didn't hear you.
You don't want to chill the fundraising effort by saying, you know, they get 150 grant, we give the 150, nobody wants to raise money, like, hey, there's 30,000 in the door.
Correct. Am I wrong in thinking that? Yeah, okay.
The whole point of a matching.
Well, that's what I think, yeah.
We can adjust that language.
Okay, all right.
Is that okay? Does that make sense to you?
Can you run that by me, just again, just so I understand?
Yeah, well, this is like, we're just doing this on the fly here.
We're just spitballing.
What they're saying is it has to be private donations, not granting sources.
Sure, yes.
Because I know that you already have some wonderful granting resources that you're looking into as well.
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you for that.
And you want to be careful too, because it can be private, it can also be a person, it can also be a business.
True.
So we want to have the clarity so that you do...
Well, here's, if I may...
You're talking basically about nonprofit grants.
Well, I think the easiest way to say it would be be it further resolved that city funds will not be distributed until funds matching 150,000 are privately raised. I think that's adequate enough...
Correct.
...to cover businesses, anything non-granting. We don't have to say non-granting sources, just privately raised.
That sounds good.
Are you guys on board with that? Alderman McConnell.
Did we want to add the language around funds dispersed upon invoice, like a final invoice? That way, we're keeping funds in a...
I think it would just be evidence of the matching.
That's up to you guys. So pros and cons, if they get to 150,000, they can say, hey, we want the 150,000, we just cut them a check. The challenge that we have, and this is from a Historical Society standpoint, if you're working on the project and moving forward, it's no big deal. But what if we give you 150,000 and you don't start for two years? We'd rather keep the 150,000 earning interest for the city, and those funds can help us with, you know, other things that we do in the city, like operating costs. So that would be, that is what you need to decide as council, whichever way you go, it will all work out, because I'm pretty optimistic they want to jump in. There sounds like there's a lot of things that need to be done. It doesn't all have to be done immediately. Alderman Shellpepper.
Now, my question is, how quickly do you anticipate needing to start spending the funds? Because although I, you know, agree, we don't, you know, the city would rather generate the interest, I could also see value, though, for the Historical Society. I mean, if you're trying to create sort of fund that helps you do these projects to be able to generate the interest yourself, if you're going to be bringing a lot of donations from other places, so...
So we are currently, we plan to launch the public phase of this campaign, you know, this fall, you know? So currently, we're still in that quiet phase. We are, we have signed a letter of intent with MSI General, and so, you know, we've been working with them, and, you know, we've explained to them, and they understand we're fundraising for this, so that if we would get to a point where we don't quite raise the money for the full project, our board has prioritized what we would take care of. So there is not an immediate need for those funds right now, because, you know, they understand that, you know, we still have some fundraising to do. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Alderman Altman Klose.
He actually just answered it.
Okay, cool. And to kind of give you a background, and I think the simplicity that Matt Rosack said makes sense, given the history of the John Lavinia Rockwell Park, there were multiple matching challenges that were done privately. None of them matched with any grants. None of them matched with any of those components. Actually, none of them matched with the city contribution. They were all internal, and I think, I think that'll all come out well. So however you guys want to do it, I think it's important that it's phrased the way you want it when someone makes a motion.
I would presume that if cities, if the projects start coming forward, and it's something city staff is very uncomfortable with, that you would let us know. I mean, I think we should, if we're going to donate the 150, we should donate it and just make it contingent, like I suggested.
Yeah.
You know, it's a matching, if that's the goal of it, and then I think, you know, we've got to trust these guys. I mean, they're doing a good thing, I'm all for it, I think it's a good project for the city. It's a great use of the tourism money, for sure, yeah.
So any other questions? Alderman Spiegelberg.
This is your chance to encourage everyone to become members of the Historical Society.
Yes, I know, I should have brought...
I'm a card-carrying member of the Historical Society, and they have, talk about, not just talk about the building, sorry, I interrupted you, but they have great ideas, they are in a great location, Roosevelt Park area is becoming a destination. So they have a lot of neat ideas for engaging with the other part of Roosevelt Park and bringing students and people to explore the grounds, too. Well, tell us a little bit about that, because I think that's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, we are situated right on that corner of Roosevelt Park, and so we're looking for ways, I mean, right now, we're just trying to beam it out there that, you know, kind of like the Who's, we are here, we are here, we are here. But then, you know, as people visit Roosevelt Park, the Imagination Station, the Splash Pad, the Skateboard Park, you know, head there in the morning, head to the museum in the afternoon, and make a day of it down there.
Great. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion with the addition of the language at the end, another be it for resolved section, be it further resolved, that city funds will not be distributed until funds matching 150,000 are privately raised.
I'll second that.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Klose.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Congratulations, we're very excited. And council, I've been in the museum more in the last year than I have in the previous 36, and I have to say that they're really doing some really fun things there. And the last time I was there, working with Justin on the time capsule, a bus came in with all these kids, and they had all these little breakout areas, and it was, just what you're doing is spectacular. It's nice to see it become so vibrant. And on behalf of the city of Oconomok, we'd like to thank you for your contribution and your guidance on the time capsule that will be buried on Friday. So you guys will get to, you guys will get to pull it out in 50 years, and it will be back in, back there, so, thank you.
Thank you all so much, and I encourage you to visit the Historical Society if you want to take a city council field trip. I don't really know if you do that. Let me know, but even on an individual basis, and I'll be sure to email each member a link to our membership site that you can, you can join right online. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Sandy. All right, we'll move on to public services. Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3295 approving a zero-foot setback along the DOT right-of-way within Old Highlander plot. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, sir. The item before us tonight is a cleanup item with our Old Highlander subdivision. When they platted this, that allowed the DOT to put in place their standard 50-foot setback requirement along their right-of-way. Fortunately for this development, that area where their development touches the DOT's right-of-way is only 118 feet long. Unfortunately, it's right where we want to extend the street in the future, and we wouldn't be able to extend the street with the DOT's 50-foot setback in place. And just to be clear, any building setbacks that the city has are still in place. All we're doing is asking the DOT to remove their setback requirement from us. So the item before you tonight is showing up on the drawing here, here's a 118-foot area. This is where a regent road would extend up into this area. It's a vacant lot right now, Shore West is looking at this, but it would be for the future extension of the street, so we're asking for that variance in there.
Any questions or comments from council? This was brought to committee earlier this evening. Any further questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
Any further comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Klose.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Next up, Consider Act on Amending the Public Facility Naming Policy. Mr. Frye, here.
Thank you. So this policy was before us two weeks ago, and there were some questions regarding the wording that was in it, and one of them had noted that you couldn't be alive and have a facility named after you. And after that meeting, I went back to find the document to make some changes in it. When I did a search, I ended up finding a different document that was actually already amended. So the original naming facility document came out in 2008. In 2012, the public service, yeah, the Public Services Committee and the Common Council approved an amendment to remove, I'm sorry, the yellow highlighted of names of living persons will not be considered. Individuals will be considered posthumously. So that was removed in 2012. So that's already out of the policy, and that was, you know, one of the big questions last time when we were talking about this. So that's a done deal there. The other part was whether or not full names could be used. And the policy was, you know, stated that they shall not, and I thought it might just be easier to indicate that you may be able to use those, to make it a little bit more positive and allow options for this council or future councils when people come forward requesting for naming of facilities.
And council, this has nothing to do with the current potential naming of Roosevelt Field. This is a lot of cleanup work, so, and policy cleanup work, so thank you, Mark, for finding...
So the only thing we're looking to vote on tonight are just the strike through and the addition of the green highlighted area.
Alderman Altman Klose.
I don't know if this is a can we or should we question? Can we or should we add language, or add like maybe a number four that says the city reserves the right to take the name off at any time? Because I know we've talked a little bit about this, you know, we use the example of Penn State, you know, and that's kind of the challenge when you're, when you're naming, especially if someone is alive. I mean, not that things can't be unearthed once they, once they pass, but, I mean, I guess just to kind of cover the city, should we say something that we can revoke it at any time? Is that a stand-off?
That actually, that actually sounds like a good idea.
I don't think it would hurt anything.
I just would hate, like, you know, if we name it, you know, Mark Fry Field, and, you know, Mark Fry does something really wrong, then you come back and you're like, it's not in the policy, I know the policy, you know, so...
That sounds like a good idea to me. Great idea.
Yes, we can add that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, with regard to the green area that Mark, and would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the policy with the name changing with the green, and then add a number four that says the city reserves the right to take the name down at any time.
I would say...
Revoke, or revoke.
Yeah, I would say the city council can revoke a naming, the city council can revoke the naming at any time for any reason. I mean, maybe give it a little more definition.
Yeah.
I had, the city council has the right to rename any city facility.
Or revoke.
For any purpose at any time.
Well, rename.
Or rename or revoke.
You know what, that's a good idea.
And I think you want specifically to have city council, not city, city council. We want to be able, for people to come to us and there's a problem, to fix it.
To the governing body. Good idea.
I'll second that.
Any further questions or comments? Gina, did you get that?
I have it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Like to call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Klose.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Mark, do we have any staff reports this evening?
Obviously, and I'm not going to jump and steal all the thunder for the upcoming weekend, I just want to talk about, you know, over the past couple of years, there's been a lot of people working, doing a lot of things to make this weekend that we have coming up very, very special for the city. And I don't want to take away anything from all those private groups, but I do want to talk about our crews and all of our departments here in the city. Because the one thing that, you know, we saw when we'd bring them together in a room and say, you know, we want this special, you guys go out and figure out what has to get done, put money in your budgets, be ready, and then get the work done. And they have done that. There's been a lot of things done to the city. A lot of it's little things that a lot of people might not even notice. I mean, we repainted all the black fencing around the trees downtown, because a lot of the paint had been worn off. But, you know, just the work at the park, I mean, we've got people up there constantly just doing those final touch-ups and getting everything in place. So, I just want to highlight the work of all the city crews, because a lot of times, we're talked about in maybe a not-so-positive light, where I think this is one time they really deserve the limelight for what they have gotten done. So, that's my...
Yeah, absolutely.
Wow.
Reports or comments from Alderman? Alderman Altman Clof.
I just want to remind everybody, you know, the eight people that are out there watching it, to go get their tickets for the police fundraiser. I believe Rosak handed out the flyers last week to some of us. That is on July 22nd. And I think just in light of what has happened in our neighboring county the last couple, the last week, it's just, we need to protect our police. They are amazing to our community, and we want to keep these guys safe, and women.
Well said. Alderman Ellis.
Yeah, I just want to mention, last week, I believe it was Friday, at the Band Shell, it was very well-attended, and I thought that the music was really good for those eight people that are actually watching. You go ahead and next week do the same, that'd be outstanding. It was really, really, really... We had overflow, which was unheard of. I've never seen that before in the 21 years I've been here, anyway.
Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, thanks, Jennifer, for mentioning the Protect the Cops event. I was going to mention that, but I appreciate that. I did have one other comment, which is kind of boring, but we put budget funds in to do some weed control, more weed control out on 67 and some of these areas that are kind of more highly trafficked. And I saw the guys out trimming weeds and putting down weed control, so appreciate that for the crew.
Yeah.
It's something that a lot of people have complained about in my area, so I appreciate that. It's a boring thing, but it's, you know, something people notice. Now, those weeds are not like five feet high, which is crazy, so, thank you.
Great. Any other comments from Alderman? See, no other comments. I do have a couple of quick comments. I just want to tell everybody, again, the same thing Mark had said about our staff, they've just been spectacular with what they've done. It's a really, really big weekend. I hope that all of you are able to participate at some level at some time to enjoy it. It kicks off at 11 o'clock with the grand opening of the John Lavinia Rockwell Park. That's going to start right promptly at 11 o'clock. There could be some special things that happen in that 30-minute timeframe that I